Hey, welcome everybody online. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Ken, can you hear us?
It's loud, I hear you fine.
We got about five or six of them, okay? We're waiting for a few more to come on and then we'll get started.
Sounds good.
This was a great reading opportunity this weekend.
Hopefully, I really enjoyed it.
During the nice weather when you should be at the lake.
I was out on my back patio. I'm enjoying the sun while reading this.
Planners always feel happy when you read their plans. They're like, oh, somebody actually read this, that's so great.
I read it all day. You know what, I almost wished I would have printed it because on the computer with the split screen, it'd go this way and that way and I've got no idea what page I'm on right now.
So it's actually easy. It does look nice.
Yarmus true.
It's easier.
Okay, welcome everybody. Our next agenda item is the last one for the day. This is a workshop for the waterways ordinance. Hopefully the folks online can hear us. This is not an actual item today, so this is just a general discussion and presentation by Waterways and Bruce and his group. So I'm going to turn it over to Bruce and go from there.
All right, Bruce, speaking with Logan Simpson, but before I get started, we had a great steering committee and I was going to have Mike maybe say a few words here about how it went.
Yeah, so I think that we have over the last almost two years working on this plan, it's been a very, very good collaboration with county and the city, which has been exciting and necessary because of the way the waterways overlap. So I think as far as the introduction to this is, so we've put a lot of time, gathered a lot of data, had significant public outreach that a lot of people really needed, wanted, that we want all that information in the plan. So I think where we've gotten to with Logan Simpson bringing all of the information together that we now are in a place where we've got some great baseline data to start with. The 2018 McCallary Comprehensive Plan asked for in the near-term priorities to make the Waterways Management Plan a part of one of the next planning processes. So between the city and county, working together, we got there. We've got this plan now and now we've got something to work off of that may help, that will help us guide the direction that we need to go in the future and not have it just be kind of, well, I think we should do this. Now we actually have some numbers. We've got things to look at in the planning process. And I personally am very grateful to have had the time working with the county commissioners and also unfortunately Dave Binghamman is not here, but he's been a, he's been very significant to say the least, as has Cindy with, from the Planning Department and bringing in with Michelle from the City Planning. So the whole collaboration across the board has just been fantastic. And so I think at this point in time, it's exciting to bring all the commissioners, council and others involved to see where we're at. Does that all lay it out?
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those opening words and I think that expressed it well. So I'm going to, we have, we planned for an hour and we'll try to respect the time, knowing that it is your last agenda item of the day and we understand that. So we'll be watching it as we go forward. But I also want to just start off by thanking the community, our committees, our technical advisory group, our volunteers. Because it's nice when, you know, you don't know how a plan is going to go and this is one where everyone is rallying around in the same direction that we have to positively work on our waterways and make sure that we have a plan in place and everyone we just want to work with. Also the visitors themselves, I'll just mention that, you know, we also talk, we always talk about residents, but just meeting people out on the lake and their love for the waterways is incredible and they also recognize the need to protect them, so just, not just a local thing.
All right, so we've got, we're going to talk a little bit about the plan highlights and a chance for you to review them, just in case you haven't, if there's key things that you want to add or change, we should, we should try to hear about that today or shortly after. But we'll give you some highlights. We will not be able to go through the whole plan. If you look at it, it has 71 strategies, it links to other documents and so on. So we're just going to give you highlights, but we're able to ask, you're able to definitely ask us, is this in here? Is this covered? Those types of questions. Lastly, we're going to talk about where it goes from here. You know, how do you maintain this? Because this is a little bit different. I heard an IT person talking about this idea of adaptive management plans as well in the IT industry. The fact that the world is changing so quickly, this idea of a 10-year plan and down to a five-year plan. Now people are talking about two-year plans and suddenly people are talking about adaptive management plans where you change it as things go. That's something happens out on the lake or on the rez where the population suddenly goes up, which is possible based on the population down in the Treasure Valley. So as these things change, you're able to react to them in a more minimal environment versus a static environment. So we'll talk a lot about that at the end.
Let me ask Bruce, just to make sure everybody online can hear you.
Yeah.
If not, we need to.
Yeah, check, check for a while.
Yeah, I hear you very well. Thank you.
Really? All right.
I can hear you. This is Colby.
Perfect. Thanks, Colby. All right, well then we'll keep on trucking ahead here. So the overall timeframe is, was field season to field season, so we got two field seasons. So again, thank you for allowing that to happen and our volunteers for doing another round. Make sure that what we heard the first time, because it was just that, you know, COVID-ish, she, end of it, to non-COVID, so make sure that there was no change there. First part was really about messaging, what this plan is and what it is not. So it's a framework, it has flexibility, it's not made to set regulations in place immediately, but afterwards it's adaptable and it's got its goal of making sure that we are really trying to address recreation, land use and environment all together. The second task was vision. That vision happens overall for the whole county about the fact that we love our waterways and we're going to protect them as use increases. But also the recognition that each waterway is different and has some very specific goals. It also looked at trends, so what's happening both in watercraft, but also in population, also in building permits, what is actually happening that's causing some of these both benefits, but also challenges in there. We had our first survey as well. As we moved into task three, it was looking at all the ranges of plans and possible actions. This, this plan's a little bit different. It is a county plan. And so a county with cities, both Donnelley and Cascade, as well as McCall, all joining in to support it. But also, this is also a county plan. And so it doesn't try to solve everything that a federal agency will do, but it's really what can the county do to help make this better and also the municipalities. Last part of this is what we're doing today is working on the final plan, but also on that adaptive management and implementation plan. So that's just been over, just over a year now. So the plan structure starts off with the overall need for the plan. Then it breaks it down in chapter two into those three categories of recreation, land use and environmental. And the reality that those are interconnected and you cannot separate them. So if you're going to, you have to work in all three to make sure that your waterways are exceptional as you go forward. Then as you go down into existing conditions in chapter two, it breaks it down by waterway. It talks about the desired future condition of each waterway, what's happening. And when you go to the plan again, starts off at the county, then breaks it down again to specific vision and strategies by waterway. Then the last chapter brings it back again to the county as a whole in terms of strategies that you can choose to implement over time depending on the conditions of the waterways. And we'll go into that as we get near, near to the end of this presentation. All right. And we have a delay, yes. So, chapter one of the plan, and this is not the whole plan, just highlights. So we'll go through, there's lots of words and we know we broke all the rules in PowerPoint making, but I'll just do highlights here. It's interesting, this was a slide that was first developed by our committee early on about what is this plan? And we, we kept pretty close to it. It's nice to go back and say, did we meet this? But one is, this is a framework. It's a place to start in terms of waterway planning and allows you to sort of adapt as you go forward. It does acknowledge that we are planning for recreation. We're not trying to stop recreation. Trying to provide diverse, diverse opportunities, but do it in the right way. That ecosystem health sometimes can say, look, yes and no in terms of recreation. It's sort of out of Leopold, you can't love it to death type of thing and we have lots of examples where that's happened, so we want to make sure we don't get there. Trends is a huge one. There's been a lot of presentations, especially recently at APA and so on, about you're a net, the Treasure Valley especially, but Idaho is a net importer of both COVID and political migration. So you're number one. Not number two, no, three, number four, you're number one. So.
We are number one, Bruce.
You're number one, you'll be known for something. Number one destination for people moving. And then followed by Arizona and Florida and previously Utah, so. So, so you can expect some of the population growth definitely to trickle upwards. That because it's going to trickle upwards, being adaptable, especially with changes in climate and so on and population and also people's living habits in terms of being able to live remotely are all going to impact a lot of, a lot of components. Short-term and long-term actions, this is a plan where it is made for you to take some actions next year, the year after, the year after this, as we go forward. And then lastly, a grassroots plan will go over the public involvement. This is heavy-duty public involvement. As much as we could get, we tried to do it. All the chapters, task one to task three, go through this adaptive management plan. We can go into what, you know, in this case, what a living document means for Valley County. All right, so in terms of public involvement, just an interesting one. Thank you to our steering committee, having 30 or so meetings and just making sure that we didn't get off base or go, go left when we should have gone right. So thanks, thanks so much. Thanks to our tag. When I show you who's on the tag, it's just great. Our technical advisory committee, it is brilliant people. They have their own tiered actions that they're working on themselves, but are, were supportive the whole way, which includes 16 agencies, as well as the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. Also our volunteers, that's a lot hours and a lot of people that were just willing to be part of the solution. They don't go away though and we're hoping that they're around at least for a couple of days every, every summer for the next 50 years. So, so sign up now. In terms of our technical advisory group, I won't read them all off, but you've got brilliant academics right here. And, and so these folks, if they choose to, can help make sure that these waterways are protected. So what a great stakeholder list.
Did you guys ever hear, move by, there was a report paper, so that information was encapsulated in this?
Yeah, that was, that was covered at the last, at the last meeting like this where our conversation with that professor was that that student is no longer working for, for them and there will, there is at least, as far as I could tell, there was no anticipated schedule for production of a report. Okay.
It didn't seem up there, and so I wondered how that actually works.
Yeah, I think that's as factual as I can be. In terms of outreach, a lot of fun tech outreach, so it was, you have a great communication program both at the city, but also at the county. So that website, we hope, just continues on and becomes the sort of center for data collection and so on for the county and the cities. But also there was questionnaires that were out there. The plan was put up on something called Conveo so people could interact with the plan. In addition, there was QR codes at the boat launches. And then the most effective way was chase down a tourist or chase down a local and interview them as they're walking. So there was that as well. So again, it's a sort of thankless task, but got us the information we needed, especially people coming right off the water. They're, 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 they're really honest about it. And the whole public involvement results, you can see those in the plan, in the plan itself. But more recently on the draft plan, about 300 comments. I don't want to say surprisingly as a consultant, but surprisingly incredibly helpful comments. So those like technical clarification, or you may want to add this, or I would state it this way. So again, thank you for that productive review. Comments about the wake zones, but support for no wake zones and even increasing them. To acknowledgement that a lot of, of our water quality issues are land use induced and are outside of the lake and those are something that's going to be long-term actions for the county to get a hold of or continue to implement to assure that we have great water quality. A little bit on Warm Lake and we did make some adjustments where we put in the no-wake zones around it, but there was comments on having no motorized on Warm Lake since that wasn't something that we heard across the board that wasn't implemented and we didn't see a carrying capacity issue on Warm Lake. So we did some slight adjustments on that based on those comments. And then lastly, the river protection, we'll see, we'll see these in the, in the recommendations. But we didn't cover all the rivers, but there is the desire to, to address all the remaining reaches of the river. So that could one day be an amendment, as well as some of the gateways or access points on the river. So that's a natural extension of a plan like this. All right, so that was essentially what you would find in chapter one. Any questions before we jump into chapters two, three and four? Good news, there's not eight. All right, hitting two.
I'll jump into two. Chapter two focuses on our current trends and I'll go pretty fast through chapter two. There's actually a whole, we came out with the current trends report earlier this year and what we spent our April meeting on was mostly the chapter two existing trends and background data. So there's more in the plan and more in the, actually the other original report too that you can go look at. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. But we narrowed down chapter two to really focus on data that will influence the strategies and synthesize the current direction so that we set the, set up this chapter for the recommendations in chapter three. Again, yeah, like Bruce mentioned, it's organized under Recreation, Land Use and Environmental Resources. We start the chapter by going over those kind of holistically across the county and then dive into those five major waterway, key waterways that we're talking about. We started the current trends report with a review of existing ordinances and past plans. And generally, you know, no surprise that all of our current plans, both at the county and the city levels, you know, recognize the waterways as a special, special importance to this area, both for, you know, traditional uses, ag and irrigation, as well as more developing and emerging trends like recreation and tourism. And the importance to keep our natural resources as part of Valley County's aesthetic and, and attraction to all of those emerging uses. We also looked at a lot of other specific reports and best management practices and plans coming from our technical advisory group, from past plans. So when we go to the strategies, you might see some plans and recommendations that have been pulled forward from those previous planning efforts so that we can tear off of and be correlated with existing efforts that, you know, the fishing game is working on or reclamation or parks are, we're all sort of on the same page. We also looked at other ordinances and studies from not only counties in Idaho, but other counties across the country that are struggling with waterway management, especially different types of, of motorized boating and looked at different case studies and recommendations from those plans. Synopsis is that basically every, every lake is completely different. Even, you know, here in Valley County, all of the waterways are completely different. So there is no one-size-fits-all recommendation even among, you know, all of these counties. And, but there, there started to be a trend, some recommendations that we'll pull up and highlight. The current plan doesn't have, there's a lot of in-text citations, but I was remiss to actually put it in the long references section. So I will put in the full citations in the final plan so that you guys can go and look at all the documents that are cited in this plan.
That was one of my questions. I have no idea what one of these is, so I'll ask you in a few minutes.
Okay. So some quick highlights. We looked at, you know, obviously recreation is being managed around and on and adjacent to the waterways by a variety of different organizations. Valley County, you know, isn't that unique position to, you know, have your marine sheriffs and looking out for the on-water recreation, but also the plan recognizes these other departments' roles in managing recreation and adjacent land uses around the county. We took apart, we looked at the data from the two seasons on overall experience and feeling of crowdedness. We're definitely seeing an increase in recreation, but what does that mean for how people are experiencing the waterways, you know, especially the three, these three bigger case studies that we looked at in this plan. And while most people still feel like they're having an excellent experience and they're not feeling crowded, there are some instances where we're like, you know, we're verging on crowdedness. So this is again, a great reason why we're doing this plan now so you can continue to collect this data and see how this changes. Hopefully with some of the early implementation strategies, this doesn't change too bad, but you, this plan will set up, set up for success if it does change in the undesirable direction. Another reason why we collected that data was to look at comparing how people are experiencing the waterways with how many boats are actually on the water. So this is called social carrying capacity. It's one way to understand when we've hit too much. It's just basically asking people, well, how many, how many boats is too many? So we were able to use our volunteers to calculate the boats on the water without a high, high, high time and low use time. So you're starting to see a little bit of site crowding with those higher numbers, you know, the, but really, you know, you're only seeing those high peak numbers on select weekends in the summer. And so you're, you're generally seeing more of a positive experience because your numbers are, you know, on the weekdays, they're a little bit lower and not those sort of shoulder seasons. Another way to look at capacity on the waterways is tying it into the physical area that you're able to boat on. This is another one of those, not, there's not one size that fits all, but there are ranges of studies that recommend four acres per boat, between 40 acres per boat. But there's, one of the reasons why it completely changes is some of these recommendations, whether there's weightless areas, whether there's certain depths, the irregular shape of a shoreline, you know, just a big round reservoir, you could have more waterways, but if it's, there's a lot of fingers, you could maybe have less carrying capacity, you know, if you have narrower areas. So you'll see in our recommendations, so this establishes our baseline and then in our recommendations, we have a number that sets the desired future condition.
And you're not close, you're not close to the carrying capacity.
Some of the existing conditions for land use, we know the watersheds used for a lot of different types of, of land and like Bruce had mentioned, you know, population is growing. The adjacent communities' populations are growing and so you're going to continue to see considerations of how that affects both water quality and water quantity, especially when you have changes of inland uses, as well as, as well as more people on landscape and however we got to, you know, consider the designated uses of a lot of the water that's in, in the reservoir, especially in the Cascade, for example, that provides flood control and power generation as well as drinking water.
Is there any data on how many septics are still close to our water bodies? And I mean, is it all sewer now or is there still septics?
It should pretty much all be on septic, or I'm sorry, all on sewer now. But Cascade, I didn't, I don't have an actual number, but we know the South Recreation Water.
Sorry, when you say close, what do you mean by close? Well, I guess I'm just thinking of our conversation earlier today and, you know, how far back are we going to look to these septics? Wondering what's within that zone right now. So that'd be good to know.
Within, yeah.
And actually Warm Lake. Where do you have their sewer up there?
They have the sewer district.
Is how many, what's in that?
Two, two, well, the recommendation is 250.
250, so what's, what's within that currently? I think the state of Idaho is 300 feet. Don't pull me on that.
So, yeah, so that, when we get to those recommendations, that is, one of them is changing some ordinances. That would be part of it.
I'll let Jen jump in here for a minute.
Sure. Actually, to answer the question about the septics, the state of Idaho, it depends on the soil type that you have. So it's a maximum of 300 feet setback for a leach field and minimum of 100 feet if, if you have like a clay type soil. But that's for Idaho code. So I'm Jennifer Zhang with Harmony Design and Engineering. We work with Logan Simpson on the environmental section of the plan and this is just reviewing, as Christina said, some of the current trends that has, has been seen over the past couple of years, including the harmful algal blooms, especially around Lake Cascade becoming more prevalent. And this is a snapshot from the Idaho DEQ five-year summer review that was just presented last year showing, for instance, just a snapshot, the chlorophyll A declining and then coming back up as well as phosphorus. And also some more recent DEQ monitoring results for Big Payette Lake where it's looking at phosphorus, which as it says here, while it's natural, it has become more prevalent due to some her, human-caused, human-caused impacts from fertilizers, erosion, wastewater and grazing. And then the next slide.
Jen, on that, as far as a question of the fertilizers, did you guys research at all what the ordinances are and is there a, what our restrictions are in fertilizers? Because I don't know. Do we have any? Does McCall or Cascade have any restriction on fertilizers next to?
Shoreline. Yeah, so we have a shoreline environment zone that covers the city and the impact area. And so kind of one of the first things we do is we try to minimize lawn areas that would require fertilizers. So that's always kind of, anything that comes through that shoreline design view process, that's part of what we look at. The problem is there's a lot of educational information and sort of best practices that's provided. And we also do some training with landscapers when we do the shoreline permitting process. So anybody who's doing work along the lake has to have a permit and go through a training to do that kind of work. The problem is, is that, right, people will put on a lot of fertilizers because they want very green lawns. And so that's a really hard thing to regulate. Like all you can do is give people the information and hope that they're going to. Like, all you can do is give people the information and hope that they're going to make that choice. But the problem is, what we found was a lot of people, right, they don't actually live here, and so they're working with a landscaping company. So we've reached out to those landscaping companies to provide them information on that. And, I mean, ultimately, I think the goal in that shoreline zone is not to have a lot of sod, especially water and fertilizer-intensive sod, and then also definitely not taking it right up to the shoreline. So minimizing lawn areas and areas that need to be fertilized is definitely a goal of that overlay thing.
Yeah, so this looks at some of the impacts of sedimentation on the water quality. We looked at not only what's happening in the rivers, but also in the lakes and some of the current research on boat impacts on sedimentation, which of course contributes to decreased aquatic habitat for fish and also helps contribute to the algal blooms that we've been seeing in some of the lakes, particularly Cascade. So a lot of, not only does the kind of location of boats from the shoreline impact sedimentation and shoreline erosion, but also the depth of water that the boats are in. And so that's what this graphic is showing, is, you know, the shallower waters, you got more suspension of the sediments and more impact to the aquatic vegetation underneath the surface as well as the bottom sediments. And then the last slide is just summarizing that we did look at each existing waterway individually and that each one has different opportunities and challenges that face each waterway. And so within the report, as Christina said, we're not going to go over everything today, but for each waterway, Cascade, Payette, Warm and the river reaches, the Alpine Lakes, we looked at what each one is, kind of what are the challenges and opportunities for each one and what's going on in each lake, since they are all different.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions on sort of the existing conditions chapters? Are we?
What page we're on?
Really dumb.
Page one or chapter three?
We're chapter three. I don't know if my questions are in this one or not, but.
Chapter three starts on 45.
Okay. Start with 49. One of the questions, though, maybe in this, is you guys had recommended no camping around Warm Lake. I mean, how much camping is actually physically on Warm Lake? What is the opportunities for campgrounds up there in a hardened environment instead of just free camping? And does that make a difference? And, you know, what kind of controls do we have? Because I think all of that's probably BOR. So I'm just curious.
Forest Service, yeah.
Or Forest Service, okay. So is there just open camping, or I haven't camped at Warm Lake around?
Yeah, it's all, there's Forest Service campgrounds. There isn't really an opportunity for designated dismers, but no more camping without the appropriate services. Right now, they don't really have the related systems.
The Forest Service campgrounds, no?
Right, and even just getting into recommendations, just why we're on Warm Lake, it's currently not being monitored. So one of the number one recommendations could be, is, the plan is, you have to monitor it.
Okay.
And when I say we have to start monitoring, you specifically.
We just got you on tape.
Yeah, we, collectively.
You can pay me to go hang out at Warm Lake a few lots.
Well, if it's the Boise National Forest's largest lake, that would be good.
Okay, so chapter three is sort of the meat of your plan. It provides a set of recommendations countywide, or objectives countywide, and then dives into recommendations for each of the waterways. Similar to sort of the overall goals of the plan, the objectives of the strategy section is really to focus on a high-quality recreation experience, public safety and preserving ecological processes. Those are the three sort of big things that we heard throughout this process, along with creating, you know, strong partnerships and being able to manage upland uses and integrating data and actions from existing plans. So, like I said, there's about 75 strategies, so we're not going to go into all of them. We also didn't, there's plenty of best management practices and standard operating procedures from plans like the Forest Service and the DEQ, and we did not incorporate every single thing that could be done on this landscape based on, you know, what are in current regulations and current guidance. So all the strategies here are, you know, key initiatives that you could, the county could be taking along with the partners to implement across each of the waterways.
Yeah, that's an important distinction, is there is, your data rich, maybe not, maybe it's not all assembled perfectly, but you have a lot of reports and a lot of best management practices. It's actually implementing and doing is probably the challenge. So this does try to put some direction on, do this step first, do this step second, and so on. Because if you're to list all the BNP's and say, right, it would be manual listed, things people could do but don't have, you have those organ.
But also, all of the partnerships, it's talking about, you know, really creating those kinds of partnerships, but I love Leonard Long, friends of Lake Cascade, but I don't know the depth of that organization, you know? If Leonard were, become ill and not be able to do it, who steps in and does that work? Because there really isn't, I don't know how deep some of these agencies are, some of these collaborators are, and so we need to figure out what that looks like moving forward and who can step in and take over some of these things. That is his passion and his life, and he spends so much time on this lake, and, you know, I love him, but need somebody to step in and help at the end of the day.
Bruce, I have a question, because I think we're kind of headed that direction, especially on Cascade Reservoir. A few years back, in another commission group, we tried to set the setbacks to 1,000 feet. We got beat up pretty bad, but it looks to me like as we get more reports coming in, more data coming in on the reservoirs going the wrong direction, that will give us enough, will that give us enough ability to say, you know, we're going to go to 500 feet or 600 feet?
Right.
And not worry about proving that in the court of law?
Right. We've done our due diligence on that. One aspect that caused at least a lot of discussion on what, what both the public was telling us and what common sense is telling us and what the science is telling us, to give you a recommendation that is probably as good as you're going to get. Other component is, if the water, if the waterways are going the wrong direction, you need to keep extending that. And so that's where, whether it's, we're giving you an exact number, but if it keeps going the other way, even after you apply that exact number, and you'll probably have to extend it again as well as put in some other recommendations. One thing you can't dispute on monitoring or adaptive management is if things are going the wrong direction, we need to go the other, you know, we need to implement additional strategies, and that shouldn't be a public debate. So, yeah, so we have provided that, and we feel it's pretty solid.
Well, in my years of living here, it seemed to me like the issue with Cascade reservoirs, as it drains down, we're getting more turbidity that spring in the algae. Is there going to be a point where, okay, we can't do any kind of deep wakeboat at a certain date, at a certain pool level, that those boats are going to eliminate from that?
No, well, we have a map in here that shows the low pool, and then actually, we're going to recommending a no wake at less than 10 feet deep, because wake, that is actually what's causing the turbidity, is when you're in that shallow water, and that's easier to, say, stay out of that area for a week, for wakeboats. And you still have a decent amount of water to boat on.
The issue that we have is county, right now, fortunately, we're, with the Coast Guard funding and stuff that we use for our sheriff's department, we have plenty of funds to buy buoys and to do that. But if we lose that funding, then we're going to be looking at another source to pay those costs every year.
That's right.
Something in the back of our mind, we're trying to plan and make sure we have all the heavy expenses now, and then if we do lose that funding, which I hope we don't, then we can do the little things.
Yeah.
Moving the buoys, I mean, that's a very expensive, costly procedure.
And that is, that is part of it. There are some small things that are, you have to fund eventually. And whether that is improvements for access to trailheads, you know, or access to river points, and just have people parking everywhere or not using the right bathrooms, you know, it's, it'll be like a Losatch, Losatch front of Salt Lake where all they talk about is toilet paper and, and dog poo, you know, and so on. I mean, that's just the reality, is you get overrun. But one of them is, is this recommendation of moving those buoys to meet that water depth, sort of a creative solution, but you might not need too many. You could also just, you know, use a lot of education and have a few of them, but you will need staffing to do that. And then also, we get to the end here, definitely staffing to, you know, continue to monitor the data as you go, so you know whether the water is healthy or not. But there is, Christina's right, there is a solution here where there is, getting back to that public debate, there is plenty of water in Cascade to be able to do what you want to do without having to impose on those wakeless zones. Those zones are not a problem, both here and also in Payette, because of water drop so quickly, there is plenty of room for everyone. So it's, we think we've got a good balance, and it shouldn't really be a debate.
Well, and I really liked the comments that a lot of folks sent in. Spend more time reading that to kind of get a feel of the public.
Yeah.
Especially on Warm Lake, that's pretty strong-willed about that. That, to me, tells me what's politically possible.
Right, right. And then again, we've talked of this a lot of times, because it's wakeless, and, you know, we recreate on, those of ours, you know, every weekend as well, have used ones. Just because it's wakeless doesn't mean you're not using your motorboat, doesn't mean you're not fishing.
Right.
Doesn't mean you're not on a paddleboard, all that is good to go. It's not, it's not no, it's just that you're having a different experience and you might be mooring up and enjoying the beach, you know, so.
Especially a paddleboard, good enough to create a wake. So, I mean, a while back, you know, in the county, there was a lot of discussion and not so much that they're coming in close to shore, but just they're creating such large wakes, even out in deep water, that those wakes are eroding shoreline or damaging whatever. Your plan seems to focus on depth. Is there any, I haven't been keeping up with the data, I think there's supposed to be data being done on Payette, which is not complete, so where is that kind of?
Yeah, most likely, yeah, I'm guessing it may not get complete.
Right, yeah.
But we did.
And I mean, other states have restrictions, I don't know what their data is or what it's based on.
It's all over the board, in terms of distances of 1,000 to closer. We did, we did look at our recommendations and what the size of that wake would be, and that wake would be pretty small by the time it hit someone's shore at the distance that we're recommending. So Jen was able to, Jen Zhang was able to find a couple of papers that show the dissipation of a large wake. So the distance, we didn't look at how big the wake is before it hits shore. We are recommending an expansion of the distance on all reservoirs, so they are, so that will help. But if you see, again, the water quality keeps decreasing, then that will be one of the factors, but it's not the only factor. It'll also be tightening up on some of the land use regulations and also some of the regulations related to farming. That's a sensitive issue, something that's more long-term, let's see how it goes, but it's something that we have to keep monitoring as we go. So we think it's, it covers both. And then the other, the other component on that one study, though, in their defense is, it was going to be, I think from talking to that student for hours on end for a while there, was it was going to be fairly targeted and very targeted at, my guess is the recommendation might not have given you a more holistic answer as compared with papers that are out there. You read those academic papers, sometimes the conclusion is very small, so I was expecting you were going to receive something along those lines.
Is there any discussion in any of this about boat size? As you're seeing these wakeboats and some of these bigger boats, is there any lakes that you know that's, you know, you can't have a boat over 30 feet or 40 feet or whatever?
I didn't see that. Jen didn't, I'm not supposed to be on the spot, Jen, but I don't think it ever measured like actual size of the boat as it relates to wake.
Yeah, I mean, there are studies, of course, all, the wake size depends on the size of the boat, the type of boat, like some boats are constructed so they create a big wake, right, because they're made for water skiing behind them, and the speed of the boat. And so we did talk about, you know, does it make sense to limit the size of the boat on the lakes if we have a certain setback, you know, from the waterways for the shoreline, I mean? And I think the consensus, just to make it easier to implement and enforce, that the 500 feet, which is what we're recommending, is a good middle ground between, you know, regulating for the worst-case scenario, the biggest boat going the fastest speed, which you might need a, you know, no-wake zone of 3,000 feet from the shoreline to limit. And then, you know, as Bruce was saying, the size of the wave by the time it reached the shoreline, you know, if we want, you know, you'll have a very large no-wake zone if you want that to be zero versus, you know, as it goes, it's, what am I trying to say? It gets exponentially smaller as we go farther. So the difference in the size of the wave, if we go from 500 to 1,000, isn't as big as going from 300 to 500 feet as an impact. So, you know, once you start getting further and further away, your return, you know, the law of diminishing return starts to get smaller, and so that's kind of where we ended up with the 500 feet versus going farther to 1,000, 1,500, or even 3,000, if you consider the very large boats. So it's, it's not a purely scientific, you know, it's all, you know, that's why we have planning and land use and regulations, it's kind of balancing all of that in the plan and in the recommendations.
But Jen, in saying that, so a lot of this, if I was looking at the maps and where you're recommending the 500 feet, there's a lot of it that's not a 500-foot recommendation. So what is the recommendation on that?
So I guess the other thing to consider is that the impact of the waves on the shoreline also depends on the condition of the shoreline, right? So if it's bumping up against something that's soft silty sand versus a hard rock, then that affects the location of those recommendations, or if you're closer to where there's a lot of recreational use near a dock, things like that. So I think there was a balance in that as well.
There's a, there's a set of criteria that says when to go to 500, so wildlife areas, areas that, you got it right there.
When a lot of it, it looked like where it was the heavy residential areas were going to the 500 foot.
That's correct.
Yeah, which makes sense, and then when there wasn't that high, rocky shore, it went lowers.
Right, and I think that, you know, we need to do some samples out there where, you know, if it's already reinforced shore, a weight, doesn't do much to that. So there is that acknowledgement, but at the same time, there's acknowledgement of depth, and that, of depth, it's to be sort of played with each other. So I think it's a more nuanced conversation.
Now, the areas that you reflected made sense to me, that was, that was good.
Yeah, and this is a good middle ground, part science, part impact of the public, part reality of what's up there, sort of approach, but it is making it harder.
So it's 300 feet everywhere and then extending to 500 in those residential instances?
Exactly.
Hey, it's not, it's not 300 feet everywhere, yeah.
Right, right.
It's not current?
It's not current. So then it's kind of hard to see on this map.
I realized that when we passed that ordinance, that there were specific areas that we, then I thought it was all.
There's certainly.
Yeah, they're called exclusionary.
On Pae.
On Pae, uh, just on Pae, yeah. There's also exclusionary areas on the two of the forks, one of the forks, I'll have to look at the map.
So then Mike, it would include three hundred foot on the Narrows at this point? That would you guys looked at, or is there still exclusionary areas?
It would still be an exclusionary in the Narrows.
I think that that was something that ended up the way they're, you know, they're, um, that was just. All gathered data from all these various angles and bringing in all the gathers that, you know, like even us, us, personally, somebody, you know, on food, on, 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 like, in these areas that ended up being the recommendations, um, like say you heard of Oh, where you have, where you have a lot of docks and that. You know, you have, you have people on a variety of different recreational uses, who is not new, pushing it out. It's not just a function of a wave and how long it takes to get to shore, whether it's a big boat, a small boat. Because smaller boat with more weight in it, you know, a small boat, a twenty-two foot boat with fifteen people in it doing this makes it much more waves than a bigger boat with three people in it going that way. Right? So that what ends up happening is, is that user conflicts become enormous by having, because somebody can go swimming with their docks and not have waves coming up. So I think that would, that, that's something that I personally too see like as a great benefit of the outcome of bringing all this data together as it relates to stuff.
And my question, and I don't know what you feel about this, but um, in this area, you know, what about doing a thousand feet where there is a non-motorized section? Because this is where all the swimmers are in the paddleboards that I've seen. I don't know if that's even an option of creating an area specifically for non-motorized use. I mean, if you look, if you look right there in front of, you know, Bear Park and, um, or is it Rotary Park? I mean, a lot of that is, I, I saw a boat come through there the other day and I thought, somebody's gonna get killed right there. That needs to be a non-motorized section specifically designated for swimmers and, you know, paddleboard. And I don't know in Cascade where that would be on the lake here, but.
In front of any boat launch or any docks, you know, um, my, my concern that keeps rolling around the back of my little head is Kevin's here, maybe he can answer this, but it's the cost of putting up these buoys to mark all this. I mean, we're gonna have more buoys out here, we're gonna have water here, but we're like working on it. My question is, has anybody brought a boat out to three hundred feet of Payette? How are you gonna buoy that? There's no way to get enough cable. And you can't. And then Cascade fluctuates so much, we're gonna have marine deputies out there daily after about five. I think there's a, the other side of this, we've got, I mean, this is a great plan, it's a great idea, but I don't know how the heck we're gonna enforce this.
We gotta give it to those guys and see if they can, they cannot.
Well, I think at a certain point, you need to bring enforcement into this conversation. Because there's a certain thing, those guys are on the water all the time. They're a valuable resource that, believe, I don't see them intact.
And that's agreed. So enforcement didn't go to any of the meetings and wasn't included in the conversation?
Maybe you should.
Someone, one of the waterways committees.
Yeah, they weren't.
They're, you got Kevin Turner, he's got a lot of years on that lake, but knows a lot about it, they probably should. Just because he's flat told me, he's like, we started talking about buoys in, in Payette, there's, he goes, how am I supposed to get anchored down there? But that's a deep lake.
I think how it was invited. I think he was invited.
We did.
So I don't.
What was that?
Christina, in the plan, does it say you have to buoy all of those?
We didn't.
No, there's, it's not a buoy issue, it's a, it's a distance issue.
We did talk, uh, Payette, it says buoys, um, to do buoys, but it's been done. For, the lakes at Payette, we do recognize that at Cascade, it would be virtually impossible. So having, and, and both, all lakes, um, you know, having user education and signage, um, to kind of understand, letting people know, like, you're, if you think you're riding close to the shore, maybe you should be checking it. It's not like you should be riding around, you know, doing your safety with your, your surfer in the back, but, you know, just kind of know, know the resource, know, know generally, like, at Cascade, a lot of people, I think, come to Cascade and don't realize how much it does fluctuate. So that maybe they're here in July and August and it looks completely different than it did here in, in June and just so, making a little bit more education, awareness of, of how much it fluctuates, why it's fluctuating, and then to be mindful of those, those lower shallower areas.
So in Payette, we do believe that we can do this. And the, the thing to add in there too is that part of the plan, having the plan, is that once we have a plan, we have an opportunity to look for grants, to look for better opportunities. If we don't have a plan, we're not that provisioned. So by having, having the planning document and any planning documents, now we can say, okay, here's our needs. Where are the opportunities to try to find funding, or to try to solve a certain issue that we're, if the plan calls for these recommendations and then we say, we wanna look towards these recommendations and try to accomplish that. So let's just say it's, for instance, the two eighty-five cost of buoys, removing buoys, or whatever it might be. Then, now, now we have a, now we have something that says, here's the recommendation, here's all the data, here's all the science, and now we wanna look towards those opportunities to get that. And somebody could say that, you know, it's not possible, and other people could say, well, there are people on the lake that have put buoys out by themselves at Payette Lake that are too, you know, how they did it and somebody else says, you can't, but they did. I thought you measured the depth. And so there's, there's opportunities. So is there, is there money out there, whether it's like, Alex said, you know, you've got the certain funding, what other funding opportunities might we have? And that's to me, on all kinds of things, where, where can we go and actually?
Well, and a part of that too is I think we need to build the infrastructure so that the deputies aren't going out there setting buoys all day long and not doing any enforcement. There's gotta be someone else, whether it's a contractor or what, but you guys don't realize how many hundreds of feet of buoy cable are laying on the bottom of these lakes, because boat rusted off and the thing sunk. And that cable's not cheap. There's a, there's a lot of money out there in the bottom of that, but. So there's things to think, and the same thing as the dock retrieve going, we're asking sheriff's deputies to do a lot of this stuff that I don't think we should be asking.
Does the state, just out of curiosity, you know, does the state do, like, for instance, at North Beach, they have a, they have a swim area now? That's on the state or is that on the county?
I think we buoy all of that, we do all that stuff. But the state inspects the boats coming in from out of state for, uh, the muscle and all that kind of stuff, which is a big, another big issue in a lot of other states is, you know, can you put a boat in this lake until you're inspected? I don't know if we wanna go down that road, because that's a whole nother level of infrastructure we'd have to go.
We have the recommendation that says work with the state to evaluate the need for localized ANS. But right now, it's only done at like entry. But it could be a future, it's one of those that's recommended as like, if nothing happens in the next three, five years, and that could be, that's in the plan to say, hey, we've already kind of, sort of thought this idea up.
I think you're right, Mike, as far as we need the plan to get the grant. And we'll see what's out there after that. I think it's about four hundred and eighty thousand a year we get from Coast Guard to run our waterways program before thirty. Kevin, you might remember.
That was probably.
I'd have to look, but um, I mean, and, and that's a nice chunk of change, but it's not gonna pay for everything. And we, I can see this is lining now, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, what other opportunities might exist that we can potentially tap into for certain projects, whether it's Cascade, Payette, One Lake, or the, or the river? You know, are there, when it gets to the conversations about like the Martin and Put-ins and the, yeah, what other, are there other opportunities out there that might be specific to certain kinds of uses or recreation or protecting the drinking water, whatever? Yeah, you, eventually, you'll, you're at a point where, um, there, there has to be some funding source for us to work, uh, and, and it's. You're gonna have, um, and we could be talking ten years down the road, but let's start thinking of it now. And that can be appropriated to local versus visitor, to what income you're gonna have, but eventually you're gonna get there no matter what. Where we just, um, where a lot of people that are coming are, are causing degradation, you know, of a funding source to offset. Back on, um, uh, Cascade though, the ten-foot depth does have, uh, does help. You know, if you're in a boat, you're, if you've got the regulations and it says, uh, it's wakeless in ten feet, you're cruising through a reeds and so on, you know that you're in ten foot. So in terms of enforcement, amount, you know, buoys might not be the solution, it might be some other. Right out. And it will take a while, but once, once the routine is there, um, in the most part, people are pretty good at it. Some people just wanna know what the rules are. They really know that a lot. Just don't know the rules, we came up with whatever, you know, yeah.
And I, you know, Park and Rec has been doing some great trailheads with QR codes. Scan it on your phone, you got all the page regulations right there, you could have a map there, you know, some of that kind of stuff. So technology is changing to where we should be able to educate in a cohesive manner. And if you see that this is five hundred feet, no wake, you know, people are gonna avoid those areas.
Yeah, and if they have maps, like, it's nice now, um, we have imagery on both, uh, waterways, this one took a little while. Uh, so a nice LiDAR flight would be nice, but, um, but I mean, it's, it's obvious that there are certain areas that should clearly be wildlife zones. You can see it, it's, they smell it, they, when you're out there, you know that it's great natural habitat for fishing and, or doing other things. You tell where the channel is. It should be too much debate, it's a big lake.
Okay, maybe I'll just highlight some other key strategies, um.
Go back one, what's two G? What is the Valley County groundwater quality improvement and drinking water source protection?
Yeah, it's new, it just came out in twenty-two.
I have not seen that.
Did you wanna, any highlights?
It's a large document put out by DEQ and partners. I've got it at my desk if you'd like to see it. They just put it out six months ago.
A lot of that, sure, it deals with like municipal wells, what you can do within a hundred feet, five hundred feet and a thousand feet. That's a lot of what that ordinance is.
It's supposed to rain this weekend.
I was thinking. No, I did that last weekend.
Close up by the fire and read a little DEQ.
I think the biggest one up there is two E. That's the next thing that we've really gotta do for Cascade.
You know, does anybody know two, um, on the, as it relates to the county and this enforcement and so forth, like, all the dispersed, where people just, we have such an increase in dispersed camping around Little Lake, around your Payette Lake, um, on the river. Like, if you're on BOR land, is that county sheriffs? Or is it something, you know, like where you've got the BOR along the river, for instance, is that? You've got somebody that's camping out there and there's signs out there that say, you know, ten-day camping land. And you have people living out there right next to the, right next to the water with their generators running and their empty gasoline cans and the garbage all over the place, um, which we have those areas, like that type of situation, is that all into the county, first enforcement, or is that something, you guys know?
Chances are it's not.
Sheriff's there.
Oh.
Not BOR, it's probably BOR.
If it's BOR, yes, we have. BOR, um, areas around it. Oh, I don't know where, here specifically.
Well, like, for instance.
BLM lands.
Yeah, so between like the BLM lands, say like the BLM lands, like at the end of Heinrich.
So.
So like for, if you go down to the end of Heinrich and you go upstream, there's a big dispersed camping area there, we.
We get calls on that and we contact BLM. If they don't have anyone that can respond, we can respond.
Oh, so you, so it's like BLM, law enforcement officers or Forest Service, if it's on Warm Lake or?
I know there's been issues like with IDL, people essentially, like where you're talking, Little Lake area.
Yep.
It's IDL lands, but they've gotten calls, there are people living out there.
Right.
Permanent camps.
And that seems, you know, yeah, so there's a lot of them, there's ones off of East Side Drive, there's ones off along state lines in different areas, but, but so then you get into when we're talking waterways, it's like the ones that are right by the river, where you've got RVs with all their, all hundred percent. And especially, I mentioned IDL, IDL wouldn't have, uh, that enforcement going unless they had it. And also, uh, it's also.
She can't hear you.
Oh. Unless it's, yeah, I said, unless you have a joint agreement with IDL, that's.
I think DGN has agreements.
So if you take state lands across country and, and integrated, uh, whether they're gonna be sold or not, just because, uh, it's a free-for-all mechanism. So, uh, IDL or state, Russ would, you know, lots of that's an issue. Also the number of trails that are, it's noted in this. But from the planning, oh.
Yeah, just, just so everybody knows, the Heinrich Lane dispersed, we are looking at that now. Where there's, there's, it's a little complicated because it's, it's, it's BLM and it's also the. We're looking at the possibility of putting in, um, uh, on the toilet over there and try to get a little more control. Well, same with Little Lake, we're already discussing that with ID, uh, IDL about getting control, because that is a mess, that. So, this is gonna be one step at a time, it's. This year, we've already got, I think we're writing, uh, seven or eight grants for toilets and try to get that, I can hear all the neck here. A whole nother step. And every time you guys bring up an area, we're adding it to our list.
Yeah, and that, that is the concept of the plan, you'll see incremental, like we saw, though they cost money. And they do eventually, staffing needs to go with it. Um, it's these incremental changes, if these incremental changes, um, result in things leveling off and being good, we need to manage this. If you don't, then you need to look at some of these other strategies to make sure that, um, that's the concept of this.
Right, that's, one, one of the biggest issues that a lot of people don't realize is that all, everybody wants more of all the toilets. All the toilet now, we used to pay like twenty-seven thousand or almost a thousand dollars now. Plus, they're twenty-two, twenty-five hundred dollars a year to maintain. That's the reason the Forest Service kind of backs off. Fortunately, these commissioners have, have worked with us and we've got a parking fee. And so far, our parking fees around those all the toilets are paying for the maintenance of every one who, you know, paid in play. And it's working really well, and that's kind of the direction.
And you'll find over time, not everyone will show this, you know. Go on record with it, over time, people will appreciate, uh, just knowing, going to pay and actually see law, law wasn't there, well, where can I park? Or are there toilets there or so?
Better quality experience.
Yeah. Or how do I get onto the water, or get off, all that. We're seeing, it's not like this now, but in ten years from now.
I think it's interesting because I think a lot of our visitors come from other places and expect those amenities. So I think they're surprised when there isn't signage or there isn't toilets. Because, I mean, that is the standard, just because we haven't needed it in the past, because we haven't had that kind of visitation. But as it increases, I think that becomes sort of the expectation of everybody. I mentioned like toilet paper everywhere, right?
Yeah.
Well, and we, we recognize the need, because we just funded two full-time recreation deputies. So they, they're gonna go through all kinds of training, they'll be in the backcountry. And, you know, it's gonna help us identify the issues. And so that is, that is something we recognized this year in our budget, the need for improvement in this area.
Yeah, it's really nice that the county and the city are both, and all the, we're all, we're all kind of getting together on all this because of the overlaps and where things go. And this is obviously focused on waterways, but it's helpful to understand, you know, when it comes to like the river, for instance, and talking about the areas that are BLM and how do we interface and.
These are regional issues, you know, not just McCall, not just Cascade, not just Donley, these are regional issues. We are one collaboration from Smith Ferry to the Adams County line and over, honestly. We're all facing the exact same things. We're all facing the exact same things. We don't need to recreate the wheel and we need to collaborate together 'cause we can do so much more together than we can apart.
But a part of that discussion is that there may come a point where we may need your help financially in the cities for some of this. It's just not there anymore. Because of the three percent and all the budget constraints that you face, that's a challenge. And I'm not saying it's that we're shooting for that goal, but there's gonna come a day when the cities may have to help us with some of this. I think that's why we're not, we're not getting a lot of enforcement, because our deputies are out trying to set the buoys and, and educate people. The other issue is it's really hard to prosecute people that violate water ordinances. They're gonna say, no, I was two-hundred-ninety-nine feet, three-hundred-and-one feet, or, you know. Now, the buoy, I was on the right side of the buoy and even though the buoy moved, you know. So there's a lot of gray area in enforcement and this kinda stuff.
Yeah, and, and that'd be an interesting, I mean, there'd be no answer of whether prosecutions end goal. Um, you know, just thinking of reservoirs we've worked on, you just don't wanna be stopped. Have your name, you know, showing up multiple times, uh, yeah, you, you just, uh, you don't wanna be that person.
Well, and I think part of our ordinance that we passed here years ago was three times and you're asked to leave the lake and you can't come back for the rest of the year. So that's pretty heavy.
You know, it's pretty heavy.
We're getting there, but it's, you, you need to talk to the prosecutor, he's the one that's gonna win that battle in court if you get that far. It's hard to do that. It's, it's a gray area for them as well.
I've been jumping all over the place.
You have a backtrack too?
We may not have, we may not have to hit, hit.
Hit all of them once here, I think. This is, so we'll start with Cascade, some of the key recommendations we talked about was the keeping the three-hundred-foot buffer and the ten-foot, and adding a ten-foot depth, um, education.
And just a note on that, a question about the thousand feet, isn't that, the, the ten-foot ranges immensely. So, so, um, but those transects we can, we can create, we can tell you how far ten feet is, uh, depending on the water level. And, uh, so it's not, again, about a distance, about, it's about ten feet.
Yep.
So fighting over distance is not worth it. A thousand feet means nothing.
I really like to write the core education program, I think we need to go. You know, everybody get out in the middle before you start though, don't start right on the shore, but.
Right.
As everybody knows, it's pretty common that, hey, I wanna run the boat right in front of the beach where grandma's sitting, so I can wave towards. You can't do that, especially jet skis, oh my god.
Grandma just got knocked out of the dock. Her chair is down in the water.
You just blew grandma right off the dock.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good example of staying and running around the middle. Um, you'll see, eventually you'll see all the other watercraft sort of off on the side and swimmers and so on. Um, and on a stormy day, you can get. You've been there.
Oh yeah, some other key recommendations, um, working with partners to assess water diversions and changes to operations so that you can maintain higher flows and colder water temperatures. Um, working with the South Lake Rec District, Record Sewer District Centralized Sewer Collection. It's one of the main areas on Cascade that's still not on the sewer. Um, lastly, looking at some key zoning provisions to either create like an overlay area or, um, change the impact report requirements to make sure, and this kinda goes back to like the fertilizer comment Commissioner Moppen had, um, to really zo- zoom in on these areas that are adjacent to the waterways to make sure that there's additional best management practices related to vegetation and clearings and water retention and, and that. Sort of for not fertilized areas, so kind of, um, enforcing that, especially as you have more and more conversions of like historic cabins and maybe more larger properties or newer owners, people that are gonna wanna see different types of.
That's a need, uh, you'll see when we get there, that's probably your easiest.
And, and I wanna kinda really quick on this because it's bothered me for years and years, but a lot of the code says if you have more than five acres, you're considered agriculture. And I think that's one of the drawbacks of that five acre or above. Those people are professional horticultures, I mean, that, either that place is either immaculate or it's gone to weeds and junk. Uh, that to me is where we're getting more fertilizer influence than the larger handovers. And I know I'm biased, 'cause I'm, I use fertilizer too, but it's done at the right time and you learn best management practices, when to apply and when not to apply it. And, uh, it's kinda the same thing with the cattle, the, um, phosphorus is not in the cow, the phosphorus is in the grass. All the cow does is eat it and bunch it up and leave it in a pile. Where you, the cattle affected is in the E. coli that's in that water, or in that manure. But blaming it on the cows over and over and over is, I just, the bad committee's backing them in nineteen-nineties and twenties. We figured it's not the cows' fault, it's just the grass that's growing around the reservoir. And it, it's hard to get that through, but I think we'd have a lot more fires if we didn't raise off some of this country.
I think a lot of that came through the TMDLs from the nineteen-nineties, um, and the non-point sources.
Non-point source, yep.
So each waterway ends with this indicator table where we have the baseline number for some key indicators. There's nine, I think, here for Cascade, so anywhere from those, you know, user satisfaction numbers, those harder, um, science numbers, phosphorus, oxygen, water temperature, so I won't go through these one by one. But a lot of the desired, most of the desired future condition, especially for the hard science numbers, are based on the current like TMDL or a recommendation from DEQ, so that's what we're trying to get to, uh, if we're not already there. Um, so for Payette, we talked about the selective targeted expansion of no-wake zones to five hundred feet in shallow areas, wildlife, river inlets, high urban impact areas, high traffic areas. Um, again, photo education, signage, those types of things. Um. Also, looking at, um, especially at the north end, creating more of a recreation plan, um, that works to designate parking and additional facilities, um, such as restrooms and kiosks and trashcans, areas up there. Um, kinda taking it from a super dispersed model to more of a designated dispersed model so that you have a little bit more concentration of impacts at the north end. Um, signing, you know, paddle swim areas, developing a concessionaire program, which we're looking at in the McCall Parks and Recreation Plan, also going on right now. Um, and reviewing, um, enforcement related missable water use and supply adjacent, for adjacent land uses. The implementation there. Again, you have your indicators table, maintaining satisfaction, dissolve oxygen, phosphorus, securing capacity. Um, Warm Lake is implementing a three-hundred-feet shoreline zone in that, during that no-wake hours. Um, and maintain, sorry, and maintaining the no-wake hours. Um, so this covers like shallow areas towards the south end of the lake. And also establishing, uh, maybe through a friends group, we'll find the letter long of Warm Lake to develop, um, maybe a friends group or working with the Forest Service and IDIQ to come up with a, a water quality program. There's probably the best way, but to continue to, um, or to start monitoring some of those indicators.
Question before we move on, we had one of the comments a couple of years back on Warm Lake, 'cause we had a guy that flies in and lands almost every weekend in Warm Lake, and he wanted that ability to keep with float planes. And if you guys have ever been to Alaska, you know, float planes.
Yeah, mhm.
More popular than cars and stuff. I thought that's interesting, I didn't know that was happening, but his cabin flies right inland, pulls up the dock and gets out.
Wow, I never, I haven't heard from him.
I wonder, we have wildlife areas, I wonder how that works.
Yeah. Like, uh, we're deferring to enforcement, but I wanna, we, so, is that something you need us to look?
Well, I don't think we've really done anything on, on making it, you know, lawful to land.
Works for turtling.
What's that?
Works for turtling.
I don't know who the guy was, but.
But that would.
That's one of those things you don't even think about.
Yeah.
That's Forest Service, that would fall under Forest Service. What does the Boise National Forest think about that? Yeah. Do they even know this exists?
Probably not.
That'd probably be a good thing to discuss with your ranger here in Cascade.
I guess what I'm saying, is it a bad thing?
I don't know, that's why I'm saying they're, they're the people that are supposed to manage that kinda stuff. Right, it's, it's, it falls under their travel management program and they just may not, they might have turned a blind eye or they addressed it. But that, you're right, that's all in the closure.
Hey, this is Colby, I gotta chime in, sorry to interrupt. Um, I have to hop off this meeting here. Um, I just want to say thank you guys for all the, um, the work that you've put in to this and, um, we're getting some really good information together. Um, and I'd like to echo what Mike said earlier about, you know, this being kind of the framework for moving forward. You know, it's kind of, it, it lays out what, what we would like to see. Um, it doesn't say that in six months, we're gonna have twenty-five more buoys on Cascade Res Four. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of a broad, slightly vague thing, but what it really will help is that when we do get into those details for whatever comes up in the future, we can have this as a reference to say, you know, this is, this is what we've agreed upon countywide on what we want for our waterways. Um, that your proposal either does fit, doesn't fit, or whatever. So it's, it'll be a great guiding document and, um, it looks, looks good to me and you guys did a great job. And enjoy the rest of the intriguing discussion. I don't, I don't know if we cut out, cut off the, uh, you know, float planes, what are they gonna do with the, the fire float planes? Gotta, gotta fill up somewhere. Anyways, that is totally.
Oh, not those kinda float planes.
Fire scooters.
There's always exceptions for fire.
But anyways, again, I really appreciate it and you guys have a, a good afternoon.
Thanks, Colby.
Are almost wrapped up here. Um, so here's a map of Warm Lake with those, uh, newer three-hundred-foot and then the shallow foundation for no-wake zones here. Um, then we also have some river reaches examples, um. Some of the key recommendations here are to clean up the dispersed camping, so we've already talked, kinda talked about that a little bit. Um, and then really develop a specific management plan for each of the regar- river segments. Um, you know, we were only able to go so far into the rivers and so it'd be helpful to, you know, dive more into, you know, specific segments, um, that need more attention, um, to look at ways to address connectivity and nutrients, uh, as well as recreation. Um, above Pale Lake, we kinda mentioned this before in the pit to actually like work on, um, a parking and a designated camping system, um, above Pale Lake and to formalize sort of the social trails. Um, and more of all toilets up there, she kinda talked about, um, ways to secure additional recreation access, um, in other public lands of, of Payette. Um.
I think I just saw a typo, I think Fisherman's Point, is that referring to Fireman's Point? Would that be a typo that we missed in our reviews?
Fisherman's Point sounds more accurate.
I don't know if there is a, I don't know if there is a Fisherman's Point, yeah, but there is a Fireman's Point.
There's a Fisherman's Point up in the Meanders.
Meanders.
Oh, okay, maybe. No, yeah, you're right, okay, we're talking the river and Fireman's is on the lake.
Yeah, this is.
Was there a discussion on making our rivers, um, non-motorized?
They're non-motorized.
Yeah, yeah.
They are non-motorized.
They're staying non-motorized.
They're staying.
That's in the current ordinance.
That's in the current ordinance, yeah.
And above the fishing bridge.
Had, never opened them up. Never, so.
I know it's above the fishing bridge, but I don't know if it's from Smith Ferry to Cascade.
Yeah, I think we, I don't think it's below Cascade, 'cause we do have this recommendation in here that, um, update the ordinance to reinforce non-motorized use below.
Um, Howard's Pond is that Smith Ferry stops most motorized boats. We've had jet boats from Horseshoe Bank come clear up to Howard's Pond.
They've gone this year past Smith Ferry and were interacting with tubers, so we need to pardon that a bit.
And I don't, you know, I don't know how far we can go with that. I'm assuming to the county line, you can't make rules for another county, but, I mean, something we probably should look at.
Well, uh, we'll make sure that we reemphasize that, that will be another.
So it's, so speaking specifically of the river reaches, um, below Lake Cascade, there at the bridge, there is an old railroad trestle bridge. And that part of the plan, I, I think I would like to see part of the plan that addresses getting those removed. Because they're very scary when you're trying to paddleboard and you're heading towards one and you're not very good at paddleboarding.
You're talking about the trestle bridges down below the Barton Bridge?
No, one that's right by the river, right by the bridge.
I guess I don't know where you're talking about.
The Fisherman's Bridge you're talking about on the highway, the Highway fifty-five?
It's the south of town.
It's right before you get to.
Oh, that way, I'm, I'm looking.
Oh, that fishing bridge.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's a, it's a definite hazard.
You're talking about down below the RV park?
No, right by the bridge, right by the north bridge. You can probably see it.
Oh, north of Cascade, okay.
Up towards, back towards the dam?
No, right by the bridge. Bridge is here, the railroad trestle is right here. It's right where the, that drainage stretch that comes along Highway fifty-five and comes out right there. You can see, you can see it easy peasy. It's scary.
But it's abandoned, no, here's another.
I was gonna go check it out. Um, we can, we can talk to, uh, we can maybe talk to enforcement.
Well, I, I, I think from what I've heard, and I've just never really scoped it out, is that, is that really the railroad, Union Pacific, there is a, even though, but you could still go to them and, and they have, they have responsibility to, if you request that to be pulled out, doesn't matter how old it is, they have, they have to do something, but.
So how many times did you bounce off of it with your paddleboard?
Well, I didn't, I learned not to let myself drift up there anymore. I have to look, tried to learn more control, 'cause.
Um, the last section in the plan relates to the Alpine Lakes, uh, which really focuses on working with the Forest Service to continue backcountry monitoring. Um, they have their own program for campsite and disturbed area parking, or disturbed area monitoring. Um, but also working with local communities to really do education and outreach here before people go into the backcountry. For our recommendations for Alpine Lakes. Okay, that got us through chapter three. Two, maybe Bruce can wrap up with five minutes on adaptive management and then we can come back to our final discussion?
Yeah. Last, last, last chapter and is, um, so the question is, is what happens, uh, next? And this, these next couple of slides sort of tell you a little bit about what adaptive management is. Um, so we are recommending that an annual report be created. So there is work, but that annual report is something that we do with plans now that change fast. Uh, no matter whether it's environmental plans or community plans and so on, where it could be a two-page brochure with just indicators. The public, here's how we're doing. We're not doing good, that's why we're doing this. So it's okay whether we're doing good or bad, that's not the point, it's just to get the data, watch where that trend is going. To have years done consistently is everything. So there's a very little debate. Why are we putting this in? Well, let's not debate over the numbers, let's debate over what the.
The trend is getting worse, it doesn't matter what the numbers are.
Exactly. Yeah.
So we talked about this years back on phosphorus, and more so in Cascade Res Four than, than Payette Lake, but so a lot of the best management came out and said, okay, instead of using ammonium phosphate, you use ammonium sulfate. So you don't get phosphorus running off in the lake. And it was even discussed at that time to limit phosphate detergent soak. And of course, you know, people weren't too happy about that either, 'cause they love their tide powder. And of course, you know, people weren't too happy about that either because they love their tide powder. And, but that's, to me, is where you would start. If we have too much phosphorus coming into McCall or Cascade, we need to think about limiting phosphorus laundry soap. To me, it's a pretty easy deal.
And you pass an ordinance and you go in the grocery store and you see it all there, so you gotta work with your grocery stores.
It's gonna go into the grocery store so you can't sell it anymore.
So, so the indicators that you saw, um, we only chose indicators that were already being produced. So whoever's doing this report, you should assign someone to carry it, do a two-page report, probably after the summer season, if you don't count the volunteers and so on, someone else organize it. Uh, but these are data that already exists. So, you're just now putting it together on one site, and I would suggest put it on a website within, with, uh, you can either do it as a, I don't know, Waterways twenty twenty-three report. And there it is, and it's two pages or whatever, or four pages, um, with just nice infographics, bar charts and so on. Or you can do it as a dashboard, um, which are widgets that you can put right into your website, your website person will know how to do that, and they just update it each year and you can take a look at it, they give a report to both, uh, the cities and the county, um, and then see how we're doing. If you see a trend where it's just, um, well, a, a, a part of that also is if there's other indicators you wanna collect, there's plenty of them. Uh, make sure you collect the key segments. Other ones, you can have supplemental ones that you can get from all those agencies if you're into that, uh, we can staying at the minimum of the ones that we said, but you can sort of add to those. Um, and then look at your work plan at the same time and start ticking off those, those easy items, and then see how it's trending. Now, if you find out that you're not meeting it, then start adding in those other strategies. Start putting them in, and, uh, only if you have to. You can do them anyways for the sake of just environmental quality and recreation and so on, but, but you don't, you don't have to. Um, and then, um, keep the plan alive in terms of if you find that it's, it's just getting worse, then, um, you can do an, a, a quick amendment to the plan that doesn't cost a lot. Uh, this idea of leaving a plan out there for ten or fifteen years and then doing an amendment, that's where things tend to add up. But if you're doing a quick one, um, and, uh, it's a small amendment, things aren't tracking. And then in five years, definitely, um, you can look at the whole thing again and see where you're at. But, um, but that's the idea of that you're always sort of checking it. And now if you go to the next slide, this is the, uh, you know, you'll have your, your various indicators from each of those sections. Whoever's doing that, they can give us a call, happy to help them set up that first one. But there are ones that you're not making right now, um, in terms of indicators. For the most part, has this indicator been triggered? No, 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 but there's a couple of yeses. So, again, it's gonna be tracking on it, if it's yes, you triggered it again, yes, you triggered it again, yes, you triggered it again. It means you've got a trend in the wrong direction and you have to have some more new strategies. So, again, it's about trends and not ha- not that it happens once. Happens once, that's fine, or happens intermittently, uh, that is sometimes an environmental cycle, but if this is just a trend, that's consistent. You have a list of, uh, of easy strategies and more, uh, more complicated strategies. Go to the next one though, just what's, what's next, and this is the last slide, is definitely, or this time next year, have that person designated and then just commit to monitoring. Once you have that data, it's, it's very empowering to the public and to everyone else. Um, and then tag your work plan and that's the list of what you're doing each year, uh, to support, uh, the waterways. And then there's some easy actions, you've already talked about both of them, but one of them is just updating your code. Uh, it is one example of an easy action. Should have community, uh, support on that and then also changing the, it sounds, um, pretty common sense, so.
And most of the monitoring, so we can do through DQ.
All, all, we give you the source.
Fishing game, yeah.
Yep, there, different people.
Tough, tough sell there.
But, uh, it's all existing data, that's someone else, you're getting pre-dated.
And who's gonna manage it, who's gonna look at that data, so we're gonna have to figure out what that looks like.
Sounds like another commissioner job. Just give it to the cities, cities wanna do it?
Or our new recreation group.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Yep. But, uh, but on that note, um, again, this was a, we're, we're, we're not going anywhere, you can call us. Um, uh, there's, there's lots of stuff to do, but, um, boy, what a great, great start and, uh, smart people in this county, so. You know what you're doing, so. Yeah, thank, thank you again for this opportunity, so. Um, there is one more, I think you, thing you wanted to address, Sinda, which was, uh, how, um,
Oh, yes.
If you go to, I think there's a slide on it, on how you're adopting, I think the city has made its choice on adoption by resolution uh, for the plan and they're happy to make, uh, some, some changes if necessary prior to that, but, you know, Valley County has a decision on how you'd like to do that.
Right, um, the county commissioners need to decide whether they want to adopt this plan by just a resolution, or do you want it to go back to the, go to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Because there's quite a bit of land use recommendations in here and then come forward to you for adoption as part of the comprehensive plan.
Um, my feeling, Sinda, is it needs to go to the public and everybody needs to be able to chew on it, so I like your P and Z recommendation of you guys get it out to the landowners of different, and do the public hearings and see what kind of return we get back on that. Rush is, okay, okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt this plan as a commissioner, we can shoot up and spit out on that without any public involvement, so. And I would encourage the cities to do the same thing.
We didn't want to give the appearance that we adopted it by resolution, um, that it was an ordinance. It was kind of the recommendation, wasn't it? Oh, take it through the P and Z, because we're gonna be implementing some of it through the comp plan, in a manner similar to our economic development strategy and in the, oh, all those pathway plans that are in the comprehensive plan of the ordinances. We could implement this through that too.
Good idea, and then you can actually take a really strong look at what ordinances do need to be changed and bring it along with it.
But it wouldn't prohibit, you know, changes to other titles as far as wake zones and, and things prior to that.
So Bob, do you think McCall would do that? How are they gonna do it?
So, we do, we adapt, um, our comp plan is kind of our overarching planning document, and then all of our other master plans we do by resolution. Um, and then we post them all to our website under our planning documents.
So you don't do a public hearing and let the public committee look at it?
We don't because we build in huge public involvement process into the, the creation of the plan, so, um, so I don't really think it's necessary to go through that secondary step. And there, there are guiding documents that ultimately any further action is gonna require further steps like adopting ordinances or things like that, so that's just how we've, we've run it through our process and I think a lot of communities do it that way, um, just because it takes less time. And.
However, we'll probably wait, because, because this is the county's plan, you are the lead, we'll wait for the results of your planning and zoning meetings. And then let us know when you'd like us to ask the city to approve it.
Well, I think we definitely need to get to the approval portion of it because then we can start writing the ordinance. This, we've gotta be transparent with everybody out there.
Yeah, I think the important thing is running it through your adoption process, however you do it, sooner than later, because the public has just engaged in all these surveys and all this effort, so if you wait too long, like, they don't remember, right?
Right, right.
And, and everybody changes over and then it's kinda hard to get it through the process later.
Seeing anything in it that's gonna raise here, I know it.
It's all recommendations, so.
We also need to put it through the sheriff's department, we need, we need enforcement mechanisms. Sinda, that was my question, is how long do you think it would take to take it through the P and Z process, what your upcoming documents look like?
We could probably get it before the P and Z in December.
We've got, I mean, before, a lot of this is gonna take effect as far as the five hundred feet areas, you know, we've got until next.
Well, if we can get it to December and get it through P and Z and then come back and get it fast in January, February timeframe, then that would get it ready for the next season. And then we'd give it a chance with the sheriff's department, see what they're gonna need to.
And get it through Parks and Rec to see what they need for education, because the education component's gonna be the most key thing that we can hit on before our next vote.
They're gonna want a new boat, I can tell you that. What kind of boat do you want, Larry?
Yeah, so I think December, January for P and Z.
Well, seeing right in the recommendations out of the plan are merely recommendations, so any kind of action that is to be taken, that's a separate item.
Oh.
But you guys, like, if from the county standpoint, were to take the existing ordinance, for instance, the Fox, you know, the waterways ordinance that we currently have, you guys were gonna change that, you'd have a whole public process as far as changing that, but this doesn't change anything, this is just a recommendation based upon all the data, all the public input, extensive public input. To say this is the direction that, that we should be looking and that we use this as a guiding document, but this isn't an ordinance that needs to be vetted out, like, do you want five hundred feet or not, because that's already all the information that got in there to say this is the recommendation, but it's not an ordinance.
And that's a good point, we've had a lot of public input so far, the reason to go to P and Z is for public input.
The plan is public input, yeah.
We'll talk to our legal team and, you know, we'll, we'll have to take amendments thinking about it.
I think that, I mean, that's the interesting piece of these plans, right, you try to engage a broad group, so you try to, like, these guys specifically tried to target different interest groups and the general public at large, like people just walking on the sidewalk using these facilities. Um, whereas like sometimes public hearings, you get people who are very specific with a specific interest, so you have, you always have to balance that with your bigger public involvement process to understand, okay, is this represent, is this one person who's just special interest coming to this public hearing? And how does that balance out with the broader public involvement piece and what we heard from?
And yeah, that's, that's a judgmental thing on everything you do and everyone seems like, but when we did the thousand-foot back a few years ago, we had Attorney Squareback from Virginia and the East Coast coming here on those, and that whole thing is, so, once the word gets out, we'll see the kind of reaction we get, but
Are we opening ourselves to that?
January or maybe February and you're ready for next voter.
I mean, that's a good question, Sherri, is that, again, that's why I think, I think clarifying what a plan is and what it is not is kind of where they started the conversation. It's where, as part of the steering committee, where we started the, is what is it and what is it not? It's not, this, this meeting is a work session for all of us to understand what has just accumulation of this almost two years of work, but it's not an ordinance, it's not saying that we're going to do it, that the county is to say this or that the city within city limits is going to do something, it's merely saying, here's the recommendations, here it is, so it's not really opening that can of worms. This has helped to avoid having that can of worms in the future.
But if we want to adopt, the, the point was if we want to adopt ordinances based upon these recommendations, it, it does need to go through our planning and zoning as far as the land use portions.
And that portion would need to go through planning and zoning, but just to adopt the resolution, this is just a guiding document. From that, we can hop in and figure out what we want to do to change ordinance. And do we want to adopt that five hundred feet?
That comes through the planning and zoning first.
Not, well, and ordinance change, yes, but this guiding document could be done by resolution easily, and then we go through it and figure out what we want to make changes in our ordinance, and that would have to come through.
Like, if you were to step forward and say, well, we want to add to our code this related to land use, then you guys take that process, is that how you guys do it?
Yes. And so if you looked at this, I mean, we're all sitting around the table today discussing, so what we're gonna do is send it back to planning and zoning, they have had no interaction with this. So we're asking them to engage on a document that they haven't any, had any interaction with on this conversation. So, that may not make sense to do that.
Then really what we should do, be transparent, if we're not figuring out P and Z, is that we need to run the public hearings here as a commissioner level public hearing and get that input if there is any. And now when they come in and say, no, you can't do that because you don't have the science, we do have the science.
And we're not gonna change any ordinances off this anyway. They need to come to an ordinance meeting where we're actually going to adopt the change.
This will allow us to change the ordinances later if we see a trend.
Typically, there's nothing in here to agree or disagree with in some ways.
We can inform them, we could have a meeting to inform, but, and, and then we work with Sinda and say, this is the ordinance, these are the changes that we want to adopt, and that goes to planning and zoning, to adoption. And to work on those.
That's my, so that's the way the city does it, more or less, what Sherri, Sherri was just explaining is that we pull something out related to land use from a plan and then it go, then that goes through that process, right?
Then through the Planning and Zoning Commission, governing boards.
Can they tell me where I'm wrong? They're always my sounding, we go back and forth.
Our ordinance is, is probably different than theirs about how we adopt our comprehensive plan. We, our comprehensive plan is an overarching document that would adopt this by reference. And we would amend our comprehensive plan to include this in it through the P and Z commission first, because our ordinance says you go to the P and Z commission first.
I'll review that.
But it's a, I mean, we should talk to our legal counsel and, if he.
Well, for one thing, they have to learn the document if we're gonna be coming back later to change. Or since they need to see the document at least.
Is that how, like you guys did, like when the city and county both adopted the twenty eighteen McCall area comprehensive, is that the same?
Well, that was different because comp plans are different, um, by state statute, but they, it went to the McCall area Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a joint commission of impact area people and city limits commissioners, and then they made a recommendation to the city council and the county commissioners, what I will tell you is because we got delayed at the tail end of that process, um, we had a turnover in our governing boards, which made the adoption, um, a little bit harder. So we engaged our council and our county commissioners for two years in that process and our general public, and then people change over and then they join it and maybe they chose not to participate in that process and they, they don't understand it, and then that becomes a lot harder for them to go for it, maybe, because they don't feel like they were engaged in that process. So, that's always like one of the, that's why I said, like, if, if you, once you get it finished, try to get it adapted with the people who were involved with it, because they understand it and they've been engaged, um, if you defer it, I mean, you could run into challenges.
Yeah, yeah, we might have whole new commissioners here in another month. Very cool. That's a good point.
You've done it two weeks?
How about you? You guys wanna adopt this plan?
Oh, I think we can do it by resolution. We really don't have any, any city per se, because the lake is all surrounded by you are, a little bit of property within the, in the river system.
But your, your counselors are gonna need to release read it, so they're gonna be a week or two to get through this.
They don't have a P and Z either. Well, thank you all for all the hard work.
Oh, yeah.
We really did push this back on you guys and you guys did the heavy lift, appreciate all of the support, input. Helping, it really makes our life easier to make decisions when you actually have data sets to go toward. That's, I mean, this all came up right when I came on the council and it was like, where's the data? I don't know what to do here, where's the data? So this really empowers the decision. Thank you very much.
We appreciate, like I said, everyone, and also having a sounding board of that tag. Like, yep, makes, makes perfect sense, you know? It's where it is now, so.
Thanks, everybody, for coming, having a sick trip home. Time for a cold beer.
So Bruce, was that you washing your hands of it, it's all in your hands now?
No, I, 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 you're all, you're, Katie's my friend, so I'm, I'm always there, so, you know where, you know where to get me.
You said you're not going anywhere, and yes, you are, you're going back to Colorado.
Yeah, but I'm obviously, I, I, I come.
Run plane at some point.
I'm the, I'm the best person, I, I. I'm the best person, I, I visit and I leave.
That was interesting, they wanted to change, start changing up your plan.
Yeah, I've been bugging them for like weeks now.